Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 joint meeting with the Rockport Board of Health and Board of Selectmen to order. I'm going to read a brief statement, and I would like members, if they feel to like to do, like to comment or add anything to it, feel free to do so. But as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I stand with municipal and public safety leaders in condemning the actions of the Minneapolis police officers which resulted in the death of George Floyd. The actions and inactions we saw in Minneapolis were disturbing, unsettling, and indefensible. We are appalled that four officers involved failed to uphold the most basic obligation to protect the sanctity of human life. We join with those across the world in demanding that these officers be held accountable and stand with those calling for broader systematic change. The town and our officers must never lose sight of the obligation to protect the sanctity of life for each and every person in our community. The trust those we are elected and appointed to serve have in us is not something that we take for granted. And while these horrific actions are ones that would never be used by our police department, we understand that there is work to be done so that the department can continue to rightfully earn the trust of the community. The town will continue to implement the best policies and procedures, train officers in the most up-to-date police standards, and work closely with community groups to promote public safety in a way that is fair, impartial, transparent, and consistent. Thank you. And I believe Selectman Donnelly wanted to comment as well.
Yeah, very, very well said, Paul. Thank you for saying that. And I think it's safe to say that most of us in this meeting don't know what it's like to be followed around a store because of the color of your skin, or have a police car drive slowly by you when you show up in a town that's mostly white. I don't know what it's like. I have friends who are black, and I hear from them what it's like, including a friend of mine who lives up in northern Vermont, was out for, he's a cyclist, and was out for a long ride, and had a big red pickup truck ride by him with a Confederate flag flying up in liberal Vermont, and changed his route because he got scared. And he's a big guy. So I just call upon all of us to be aware, and I'm sure most of us are, and, you know, we need to be a welcoming team because we rely on tourists for our livelihood. So I support your comments, Paul.
Join the meeting.
And I stand with you.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else?
I'd like to say something. I'll digress if anybody else has anything to say.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Okay, I just kind of wrote it down here real quick, and I, these are my sentiments, and this is how I feel. So while I, without any reservation, support 100% everyone's right, regardless of color, creed, sexual orientation, I will never support an organization that openly calls for the murder of police officers who want to protect them, that wish them harm, or even death. I am not defending the actions of some officers and condemn them in the strongest possible way. We should be mindful that systemic change is definitely needed in our police system. However, I want to thank all of the law enforcement officers who do their job in a professional way every day. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure, I'll just add, thank you, Paul, for that statement. It would be great if, I know you shared it all with us right before the meeting, but if we could share out a copy as well so that people can read it. But thank you so much, and I stand with you as well.
Great. Thank you.
I also do, Paul. It was very well written, and you did a great job. Thank you. And I stand by you, too.
And if I alluded to anything other than that, I do also stand with that statement, Paul. I think it was, I think it was needed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I also stand with the statement, as does Police Chief Horvath and Assistant Chief Schmig.
Great.
I just wanted to add, there is a vigil in downtown Rockport scheduled on the lawn of the Congregational Church, sponsored by the UU and the Congregational Church, Friday at 4:00. If anyone in Rockport or elsewhere is interested, there is an opportunity to express your feelings around everything that's been happening.
Great. And that's June 19th, this Friday?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Anyone else?
What time, Bruce?
4:00 P.M.
4:00 to 5:00. 4:00 P.M.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I'm very proud to be sharing this forum with our Board of Selectmen who made this statement, and these statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Okay. Well, let's go on to some more business that the town needs to do. Letter B, COVID-19 data presentation reviews.
And this is me.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you. Let me get all set up here. Everyone can see my slide?
Yes.
Yes. Great. So, so far, our focus has really been on documenting the extent of COVID here in Rockport and comparing it to Cape Ann and Massachusetts as a whole. And as we begin to open up, I'd like for us to add an additional focus, which is really thinking about how the data can help us make better decisions and policies as we move forward. So I would like everybody on both boards and all the public listening to really keep in mind that the data are to help us and guide us so that we can keep Rockport as safe and healthy as possible as we move forward to try to open up. Now, there are examples of how the data can be useful, and as we go through some of the slides, I'll try to highlight it. For instance, looking at some of the demographic data might help us target interventions and preventions. Secondly, we'll see in the slide the relatively low testing rate in Rockport and Cape Ann compared to statewide, I think is a useful data item that can help us advocate even more to try to get testing closer to us. And third, you know, as we begin to open up the beaches and shores, we really need to carefully monitor any additional cases and increases. And finally, we need to be vigilant in terms of tracking what's going on at Denmark and congregate housing, living facilities. So I just want to keep in mind, the purpose of the data now is really moving into the phase where we want to use the information to help us make better decisions. Let me get to it here. This slide, you can see, up until May 21, we're having relatively fewer cases, although we'll talk a little bit later about what's going on in Denmark. Looking at outcomes for the data, the mortality rate in Rockport is similar to Cape Ann and Massachusetts, between 5% and 10%, although a slightly larger portion of our community cases have recovered here in Rockport, about 2/3 compared to about 1/2 in Cape Ann, which indicates to me that exposures might have been earlier on in Rockport. The gender distribution, the proportion of females is slightly greater than in males, and this is consistent in Rockport throughout Cape Ann and Massachusetts as a whole. These data, again, are focused on community cases. Cases in Rockport that have happened in long-term care facilities have been removed from most of the slides. And to me, this is an example of how we might use the data in Rockport to help us drive some of our messaging and policies. If you can see on the pie on the left, 3 out of 10 cases in Rockport are to ages 60 to 69, a much higher percentage than Cape Ann, and much higher than Massachusetts as a whole. So when we think about interventions and preventions, it looks like targeting this age group, which probably reflects the age distribution in Rockport to some extent, makes a lot of sense. And we have a relatively smaller proportion of cases among persons under the age of 50. This might be changing as we have more visitors in town. So this is a statistic that might bear watching. Hospitalizations, although the numbers are very small in Rockport, the hospitalization rate on Rockport and Cape Ann is much higher than statewide, between 20 and 30% compared to 1 out of 50 statewide. Again, this might reflect the age distribution and the severity of cases. This might also reflect the fact that testing in Rockport probably has only been for the most severe cases, whereas elsewhere in the state, testing might have been expanded more broadly. I don't have any data to confirm that, but that's something we need to try to pursue. Underlying health conditions, about 1/3 of the cases in Rockport and Cape Ann are to folks who've had underlying health conditions, although there's still a great deal unknown of cases under investigation. Healthcare workers, as I stated previously, Rockport has a lot of nurses and doctors and folks working in healthcare. We need to continue our vigilance amongst folks working in these professions. And here we can see that about 40% of the community cases in Rockport are among healthcare workers, and overall in Cape Ann, it's about 20%, although occupations are unknown for a high proportion in Cape Ann. Here's the slide that focuses on congregate settings. Rockport, half of our cases have been to residents in long-term care facilities, and 2/3 of those up until 6/8 have recovered, although we'll talk more about Denmark later. This slide, I think, is of particular interest. If you look at the fourth column, the percent tested, you can see all throughout Cape Ann, the testing percentage is from around 4% to 6.5%, which is substantially below the state testing rate of almost 10%. And again, as we open up and there are more visitors coming to town, it's imperative, I think, that we find more testing closer to Rockport. Finally, the good news is, up to June 10, there have been substantial declines in the number of new cases. From June 3 to June 10, there were only three new cases in Cape Ann. We don't have data yet that looks at the impact of Memorial Day, opening up the beaches, and some of the protests and rallies. I think it'll be another week or two before we begin to see any impact of some of the openings and their effect in Rockport. It's also going to be, as we need to keep in mind, as we have visitors in town, if, in fact, they do get COVID, their COVID cases will be attributed to their town of residence. So I, you know, we need to figure out a way to monitor how folks who visit our community impact not only the residents in our community, but our town as a whole. So I'll stop there. But again, I'd really appreciate any feedback from the board or the public about what data that we think would help us move forward to open up in a very safe manner. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Cohen. Any comments from either board? Denise?
Yes, Dr. Cohen, I have a question for you. Is it still the case that only people who are symptomatic can get tests?
Barb, you might be able to answer it best from Beverly's perspective, but I think there still is, well, for instance, on the 18th, I think on the 17th and the 18th, there's going to be pop-up testing throughout the state for people who have attended gatherings, large gatherings. So they aren't necessarily suspected cases or displaying any signs or symptoms. I think most of the testing so far still is for people who are symptomatic or who have been exposed to people who are symptomatic.
Right, right.
Barb, is that true?
Yep, this is Barb McCarthy. I would say that our testing right now is still sort of, it comes under three groups of patients. Number one is those who are symptomatic, as Dr. Cohen has said. Number two, those who might be in contact, have been in contact with someone who has COVID positive, is COVID positive, whether they're symptomatic or not. And the third group of people are those which we would call under screening. So we screen for COVID all of our pre-op patients, all of our patients for labor and delivery. We will be screening all inpatients coming to Addison Gilbert and Beverly, and we screen all inpatient behavioral health patients because they really, they work and, or they're patients in more of a communal setting when they're inpatient with us. So those are those groups of patients right now. Certainly, it's not a public health surveillance model of testing.
Thank you.
It's not a public health screening model, but we're hoping, I keep hoping every day that we're going to get there. But those are the groups of patients right now.
Thank you. I had another question. In the tracing, that's contact tracing that's done, are people asked if they've traveled to other locations outside of their hometown? And would we be informed if they had come to Rockport?
Chassie and Teresa, do you want to respond, please?
We do ask about travel. We ask about travel during the infectious period, and we ask about, in addition to travel, where somebody might have gone to work, they've gone to church, people they may have been around. So yes, with that information, we usually reach out to the community that they've identified, and we usually let that public health nurse know the event, whether it was a workplace or other. So yes, we would hope to hear from other communities about their cases if they identified being in Rockport at a restaurant, or a shop, or, you know, an event.
So it might, it might be nice to see that data if it becomes available.
Thank you, Denise. Dr. Newman?
Just a follow-up question for Barb regarding testing. Is the testing being limited to the groups you mentioned because there still is not as much availability of testing as we would like?
Yes. I hesitate on that because I think that over the next month or so, we will see some changes in our testing methodology as well. Right now, it's a, not to get boring or gory, but it's a nasal pharyngeal swab, and it takes between 24 and 48 hours for the result to come back. And I think that you'll see us moving more toward a rapid testing, whether it be four hours or two hours, or a nasal swab, or some other methodology. I would say this whole army of people at the hospital really working on what's the right methodology to use. I think you'll see us relax the testing a little bit more as the methodologies open up. Dr. Newman?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to the next agenda item, and that is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve all non-held items on the consent agenda.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, moved in second. And all those in favor, roll call, vote. Selectman Donnelly?
Should you maybe just list what's on the consent agenda, just so everyone knows?
Uh...
Want me to do it? I have it in front of me.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, so it's just approval of minutes, if any, a notice of lease for 134 Long Beach, the acceptance of a gift from George Grimes for the fire department, appointment of seasonal lifeguards, and the appointment of the assistant town clerk to the Board of Registars. And I know that the assistant town clerk is on the call tonight, so we could congratulate Melanie on her appointment.
Absolutely. So, okay, thank you, Sarah, for listing those. Roll call, vote. Selectman You got to mute yourself. Unmute yourself. We'll come back to you.
There we go.
Aye. Okay, Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Very good. And this might be a nice time to congratulate Melanie. What else? Congratulations, Melanie. She's muted. Okay. Let's go on to the warrant for the annual town election on June 30, 2020. Is there a motion?
If this is mine, I don't have the motions in front of me. If somebody could take that, I'd appreciate it.
I can take it, Paul.
Yep, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the June 30, 2020 annual town election warrant.
Okay, you moved in second. And any further discussion?
Hearing, yes, sir. Town clerk Pat Brown is on. If there's any info she wanted to share, Pat, if there's any you want to share ahead of time?
No, we just needed to approve the warrant so we can go forward with the election. Ruth asked me how many people had actually been voting absentee, and we have so far 110 early voters, and we have 243 absentee voters, and many of those have asked to have all elections this year. So that 243 people would like to have ballots mailed to them as well in September and November. So right now, we're up at 354 ballots have already been mailed out. Many of them have been returned. Anyone listening, you can still get a ballot. Generally, it only takes a day to get a ballot mailed to you. Melanie and I are working to get them out the same day that we received them. Today, I mailed well over 50 of them out, and we're having a good response. You can also, I also like to let everybody know they can email me at pbrown@rockportma.gov. Just so long as I have a signed letter asking for a ballot, I can send it to you. You don't need to use a form. I just need your signature, and that releases the ballot. So people have been judiciously sending them in, and we're sending them out as just as fast as we can. So we've had very good response so far.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
One quick question for Pat, if I can?
Sure.
Pat, is there a deadline, so that people should be aware of, that they have to get that in by?
The election is on Tuesday, June 30. So the last absentee ballot to be done would be Monday at noon time. So if you get those into me prior to Monday, I will get them out just as fast as I can. You have to understand, if I'm mailing it, it's going to take a day. You might not get it in time for the election. However, depending upon the mail, you could just have to get it back to me the day of the election, June 30, before 8 o'clock when the polls close. So anyone returning those ballots, remember to get them back to me by June 30 at 8 o'clock.
Thank you, Pat.
Yep.
Thank you, Pat, for the update. Anyone else for any other comments? Hearing none.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pat.
Let's do a roll call, vote. Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Very good. Let's continue on with nomination and appointment of Barbara McCarthy to the Board of Health.
I move that Selectmen nominate and appoint Barbara McCarthy as a member of the Board of Health for a term to expire on June 30, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to note, this is a nomination and an appointment in the same meeting, so that Barbara can hit the ground running.
We're trying to catch her. We're trying to, we're trying to catch her before she runs.
Yeah.
At this point, she's on so many reopening committees that we can't, she can't run. So we've got to get her.
I can hear you all.
Great. Any other comments?
Just speaking for the Board of Health, I already consider you a full-fledged member. This will make it official, but thank you so much. Looking forward to addressing a lot of public health issues with you, Barb. Your wisdom and experience will add enormously to our deliberations.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I can get some catching Cape Ann, then it'll be worth it.
All right. Any other comments, concerns? Dr. Wedmore?
Just to reiterate, I think it's great that Barbara has stepped into this two and a half months before participating in what is going to be a challenging Board of Health tenure. Thank you, Barb.
Thanks, Sid.
That's great. Okay, let's do a roll call, vote, please, for the nomination and appointment of Barbara McCarthy. Ms. Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes, and congratulations, Barb.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, let's continue on with our agenda item. We're doing some money for COVID. Mitch, number three?
Yes.
CARES Act.
Okay, what are we doing? Just to give a little explanation before you make the motion, if I could.
Please.
So this is a safety net as recommended by the Department of Revenue. Should there be any expenses that come in, especially as we're creeping closer to the end of the fiscal year? All towns are being encouraged to seek basically deficit spending and overdraft authority for COVID-related expenses. We are not anticipating doing that. Our people are not anticipating it. We're doing quite fine. We're covering the cost of the supplies based on the spending freeze that we had in place. We've been able to cover what we have, and we've submitted for the CARES Act. But having this safeguard in place basically allows, if for some reason something comes in last minute, or there's an issue we need to address, anything that does go over will not be, will not affect our free cash for the upcoming year, which is very important. So again, we're not anticipating needing this. It's simply a safety net the DOR is recommending.
Perfect. Okay. Any other discussion? And may I have, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move that the Board approve a request to the Department of Revenue to authorize deficit spending up to $100,000 for COVID-19-related expenses if needed.
Okay. You heard that. Is there a second?
I'll see if I can.
Moved in... Moved in seconded.
Great.
Okay, and any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Selectman Donley?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes five zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay, a request to place signs on town property. Mitch, do you want to?
You have a, the board has a request in its packet.
Packet, yep.
Placement of a sign. I'm not sure if somebody is on the call for this request. If somebody is on the call to speak to this request, please either activate your video or use the raise hand function so that we can unmute you.
Okay, apparently.
Not seeing anybody, so Mr. Chair, you have the request in front of you for the placement of sign policy decision for the, for the Board to make.
Currently, the bylaw states that no signs on private property. Excuse me, on public property.
Correct, without the permission of the Selectmen. And signs on the welcome to Rockport sign, based on the policy adjustment you made last year, needs to be for the nonprofit unless there's special permission granted from Selectmen.
Okay. Any comments from the Board of Selectmen? Ms. Donley?
Yeah, so it, it sounds as if it's within our jurisdiction to allow this if we choose, correct?
We'd have to make an exception to the bylaw, but it's within our authority.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask, I apologize, I didn't, I don't have the packet, I didn't, I didn't see the email, I'm sure Mitch sent it out, but the sign is in regards to?
Black Lives Matter.
Okay.
And the request is to put it at the police station to sign on public property.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Has anyone asked the chief his opinion about this?
So, the chief forwarded it to here, it's a, it's a, you know, feels the same, it's a policy decision for the Board.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it.
Okay.
Um, I personally am not in favor of it, not because of the, the subject matter. Personally, I would be happy to have a sign in my yard, but unfortunately, I think that the, and I think this probably got stirred up because I think some, they mentioned some signs that were put on public property and then, and then taken down, and there was a whole kind of debate over Facebook about that. I'm not sure if the people that put them on public property at first realized that you couldn't put signs on public property. So, unfortunately, I think that it's just not the appropriate place, and I personally would recommend that the, the people that are interested in doing it kind of do it like a campaign and reach out to as many people as they can and try to get them on, on private property. But unfortunately, I just don't think that public property is the place for, for any signs. It, it doesn't matter what the subject is.
Okay, anyone else from the Board?
Just this clarification, oh, I'm sorry, Ruthie, go ahead.
I, I agree with Sarah. I think it's, it should be on private property. People want to have a sign, that's great. Also, people can have a, a march like we have at different times for different events. Certainly, that can be done in town, but I don't think it should be done on town property, just putting a sign up.
I'm a little concerned that the person that, you know, put this forward isn't here, it's because we have questions. So, I don't know if we can act on this without having the person who's, you know, the point person here to discuss it. But I'm, I'm in agreement with Sarah and Ruth in that, you know, if we open it up to one group, we're going to have to open it up to everyone. And there is a bylaw that states that you cannot have signs on public property. So, we'd have to make an exception, so.
Is this, is this a sign that would be in front of the police station on their property or on the, the welcome to Rockport sign below it?
My understanding from the email was that they wanted it at the police station. I could be, as if.
It indicates.
They had mentioned both places.
Okay.
Okay. I'm in agreement with Sarah as well, I don't think it's appropriate. I think, you know, further, I think it sets a dangerous precedent for other causes. Then we open ourselves up to potential liability because we've granted one and denied another. So, I think the policy should stay as it is.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I'm not sure, the, the letter doesn't state, I don't, it doesn't, if the person isn't here, it doesn't actually state if they're a resident or not. So, I'm not sure, Mitch, do you know if they knew that tonight was the meeting?
Deb tells me that they were invited.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't, it actually doesn't, there's no address or anything on the email that came through. It was just a, a personal email that was sent to Debbie. So, yeah, but, so I, I'm not sure if there's, I wish they were here because I would love to tell them the different things that, that I think that they could do. Just because, you know, I hate, as we all do, just having to say no to something without giving different options because I think for this, there are lots of options. But maybe we can have Debbie or Mitch just kind of reply with an email saying, you know, that we shared a few options for them.
Yep, and they're welcome to come back for a meeting down the road.
Yeah, or they, I mean, they.
Larger discussion.
They could also reach out to us personally.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, let's move on to a request.
We need to vote on this.
I don't, was there a motion?
There's no motion.
There wasn't, so if, you can, you can either move to approve or move to deny the request.
Okay.
Up to, up to you.
Well, why don't we see if they, are they going to come back next week or the following week?
Well, no, I think if we've had the discussion.
We need to, we need to vote on it.
Yeah, I think we should just vote on it.
Okay, why don't we make a motion? Who wants to make the motion?
Sure. I can make it if you'd like. Mitch, these have to be stated in the affirmative, correct? Okay. Okay, that's fine. I will move that we approve the sign of a, approve a sign at the police station and/or the welcome to Rockport sign.
Wait, but you just.
No. Is that not it?
Yeah, no, I think the motion is to deny, make a.
Right, but I thought the motion had to be, had to be stated in the, in the affirmative, is the way they should be.
If you say, I may, I move that we deny it, and then we, we vote in the affirmative, we can say aye, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Either, either way works.
Okay, okay, would you like me to restate it?
Sure.
And the other way?
Yeah, do mine, okay.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. I move that we deny the placing of a sign on public property as written.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved in second, and any further discussion?
No, Mitch, if you can just reach out and just state that, you know, some other option, that we gave some other options, I think that would be helpful, thanks.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea. Let's do a roll call vote. Selectman Donley?
No.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion is denied for one. So, let's move on to the next one, and that is the request to remove or to take 100 poples from Pebble Beach. That was, this was another email that we got. Mitch, do you want to talk about that?
Mr. Chair, I believe the requester is here.
Okay, good.
If the Requestor is here, if you can either activate your video or raise your hand. Okay, Rosemary McNiff, I'm clicking on mute, okay, you're unmuted. Just give us your full name and address, please, for the record.
Rosemary Claire McNiff, 68 Twin Light Circle, Rockport, MA.
Well, thank you for joining us in this meeting. And can you tell us a little bit about what you're proposing to do?
Yes, so me alongside Kim, who's also part of this call, we were brainstorming ways to actively support the Black Lives Matter movement, and we decided that we wanted to paint peace rocks and to symbolize the importance of racial equality and this cause as we firmly stand behind this movement. And we, any, basically wanted to have these rocks be decorated and we would donate them. No, sorry, anyone who would donate to our cause, which would be the Black Table Arts, which is a nonprofit whose mission is to bring together black communities through the arts, we would drive and drop off a rock that we painted to their house, just as a little thank you, something that they can display on their yard. So, wouldn't it be on public, private, it would be on private property, not public, so.
As of, just so everyone knows, right now, it's illegal to remove poples from the beach. So, but anyway, well, thank you for, for coming and speaking on this. Is, is it Kim, did you say, who's, what's her last name? Partner?
Rosemary is just speaking now, and she indicated her co-requester Kim is also on the call.
Okay.
All right, Kim McCaffrey.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, Sarah, go ahead.
So, thank you, thanks to both of you for joining us tonight. So, unfortunately, again, this is something that I, I love personally, I love your idea. I think the idea of peace rocks is super cool and painting them, and I've seen lots of rocks all over Cape Ann that have been painted to. But unfortunately, we, in my opinion, we can't give permission to, to take rocks off the beach. So, that's, I'm only one vote, but I would suggest, you know, contacting everyone you know, and literally, because this is Rockport, asking friends and family, and, you know, there are probably 50 people, 56 people on this call to maybe donate a few rocks from their yards if, if people choose. But unfortunately, it's, it's not legal for a reason because the, it's public property. And even though I totally understand that, you know, they're going to be making donations, it's just we can't give, we can't, public property kind of can't be involved.
And, and I think there are some craft stores that sell rocks that you could, it wouldn't be as nice as Pebbles, I mean, poples, but that you could do that, or maybe even speak to Johnson's Quarry. Maybe they have some pieces of granite that you could use, you know, something along those lines.
Yeah.
Selectman George?
I agree with Sarah. I, you know, I think that there might be some other options, but, I mean, those poples down at the beaches are one of our first levels of defense when the waves come and trapping, trapping the waves and the motion of them and the sand and their protection mechanism that we value in this town. And we can't let someone, for any cause, take them off the beach. They are, they are needed there desperately.
Agreed, yeah. Selectman Donley?
Aye, yeah, I, I agree that they should not be removed from the beach, not because they're public property, but because of what Ruth said, and they do serve as a form of protection. I'm, I'm pretty sure if anybody on this call has a garden, you know there are plenty of rocks around, and I'd be happy to donate some from my garden, so.
Quite a garden at that, too.
So, I, I totally support the cause, but I think there are so many other sources that I think we should probably ask you to look for those other sources, including Johnson's Quarry.
Yep.
Yeah, if you want to share an email address on this call, I'd be happy to, to give you a couple rocks from my yard as well.
Me too.
Yep, me, me for.
And I won't, I won't be redundant, but I do agree with the rest that I don't think that it's the, it's the correct, this is a correct action, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. So, let's, we should have a motion. Is there a motion from someone who would like to make it?
I'll make a motion.
Selectman George?
I'll make a motion to deny the request for 100 pop, for 100 poples to be removed for, from Pebble Beach to be used.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Oops, sorry.
That's fine.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion?
If they want, could they share an email address so people could reach them if they wanted?
Yes, I will be sharing it in the chat right now, if that's all right. Thank you so much.
The chat feature isn't activated for everybody.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, should I just say it out loud now? Would that work? Okay. Nick, so MC22Niff, N-I-F-F, at gmail dot com.
Rocks coming your way.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rosemary.
Can I, can I ask one question? How, how large would you like the rocks? What, what, what size are you looking for? I know that's a weird question, but what would you like?
That's actually a very helpful question, thank you for asking that. So, we were just sort of thinking, like, rocks you can easily sort of fit in your hand. Smooth would be ideal just for the painting purposes, whatever we paint on is more legible. But like something the size of like a cellphone, you know, nothing, nothing too big, but big enough so where we can actually paint on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, anything else from Board members? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Selectman Donley?
The motion was to deny, right?
Yes.
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes. Okay, number six, end of the year transfer, if any. Mitch, do we have anything that we need to enact?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are two year-end transfers. One for $324 and the Forest Fire Department from parts and accessories to forest fire firefighter stipends. There was a shortage in that line. And the second one for $9,000 from firefighter stipends to firefighter equipment of the fire department.
Okay, we need to act on that this evening. There is, is there a motion to make these transfers?
Sure. I move that the Selectmen approve and ask that the chairperson to sign the following year-end transfers amount $324 from parts and accessories to forest fires fighter, firefighter stipends, and $9,000 from firefighter stipends to firefighting equipment.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Selectman Donley?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes five zero. Any, Bruce, I'll probably turn this over to you, any Board of Health approval of minutes?
I believe May 28th and June 2nd, is that correct, Leslie? The two sets of minutes? So, for the Board of Health, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Or any comment or feedback on either of those minutes?
Can we do them together?
Were those sent out?
Yes, Leslie sent them out. I know in a previous email, Leslie.
Yesterday, they went out yesterday for a second time.
I believe Barb had a correction to one of those, Barb?
I did, I had a correction on the May 28th minute under, on page two. It, it spoke about, again, testing, my favorite subject, in that we were prepared to do testing, and at this time, we were not prepared, prepared to open that up, so. That line just had to get confirmed in the minute.
So, so Barb, if you could give, send the wording directly to Eileen, Ellen, Eileen?
Eileen.
Eileen, so she could make those changes.
I already did that.
Okay, great. Have they, I don't know whether they've been reflected in the new version.
Yeah, they were.
Okay, great. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the May 28th and for June 2nd?
I move that we approve the minutes for those two meetings.
Thanks, Ron, here a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mary Beth. Okay, roll call, Sid?
Bruce, before we get to the roll calls, time for discussion.
Oh, sure, sorry.
I don't remember whether it's the 26th or the 2nd of June. I don't remember whether it's the 26th or the 2nd of June, but one of the topics was enforcement of Board of Health activities and Board of Health orders. There was no notation of that at all in the copy that I saw. So until those are corrected, I'm unwilling to accept those.
Sid, do you have specific language you want to send to Eileen or do you want to postpone the review of the minutes until our next meeting?
I'd like to postpone it because it was an agenda item in which there was essential, there was about 15 minutes of discussion. It started with when you looked down at Bear Skin Neck and sorry, it was very busy, you walked away. And the question from that was, how do, how do Board of Health orders get implemented? There was discussion by the selectmen, there was discussion by the Board of Health, and it finally came down to it's a police, police activity.
So does anybody recall whether that was at the May 28th meeting or the June 2nd meeting?
I don't recall.
We could go back and listen to the Zoom.
I feel like that was in May.
Yeah, I think it was the May 28th meeting. So let, could we, Sid, postpone, postpone voting on the May 28th? And we'll all review the May 28th minutes to make sure it includes the information you're concerned with and vote on the June 2nd now.
That's fine if it were the 28th.
Well, well, let's, let's make it, let's assume it's the, the May 28th meeting. I think it was.
But Bruce, is there any urgency to approving either of these minutes now?
No, we could postpone both until we investigate, Ron. So so I, why don't we just do that? Ron, can I have your forbearance and could you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
And Mary Beth, would you kindly withdraw your second?
I remove my second.
So we will postpone the review and approval of minutes for May 28th to June 2nd. And let's see if we can get Eileen to review the notes that she based the minutes on to identify the appropriate meeting and make sure that discussion is reflected.
And Bruce?
Hi, this is Barb. This is Barb. Can I just say, Sid, I, I think that the conversation is in the minutes of May 28th. Would you like me to read that section?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sid Wedmore said at the last meeting that Bruce Cohen said he looked down Bear Skin Neck and 95% had masks, but social distancing wasn't taking place consistently. Select person Donnelly said overcrowding at a beach in Beverly Lake, the beach being cleared. The social distancing requirement, requirements are 12 feet, not six feet. Was questioned if the signage at the beach should be made more clear. That is being worked on now. Bruce Cohen says that as we did for Bear Skin Neck, we can enforce face covering at the transfer station. Sadie said more out-of-towners will be at the beaches. How about a police officer's station right at the beginning of Bear Skin Neck? Ron Newman said the transfer station, people bunch up, not everyone is social distancing. He asked if police can close down the neck. Mitch said we would have an emergency meeting if the police wanted to close down the neck. And Sid says masks are to protect the wearer, to protect those around you. Does that make sense for what the conversation was?
Well, that's the problem. It's pretty ragged and I think it needs some editing and I think it needs a little bit of clarification because it's all jumbled in there like a Laguini.
Got it.
And also, I would suggest that the Board of Health get the minutes of a meeting on which we're going to vote on at least two days before the meeting.
Okay, I, I know we've been meeting more often than we usually do, so I understand how difficult it is. But we, we don't have to vote on minutes that rapidly. So we'll try to get the minutes in a timely fashion so we all have the opportunity to review. So I suggest that all Board of Health members, you know, go through both the minutes for the 28th and the 2nd carefully so that we can consider them at our next meeting.
And Wedmore, just to clarify, what, the discussion, as I recall, was sort of an open-ended question by you is who's enforcing these orders? And so what came of that is the police are enforcing these orders. Do you want that stated more clearly on the minutes?
Yes. Because the, the discussion, again, started with, there was federal rules that defer to the state and there are state rules that defer to the Board of Health. And then when all comes, when all is said and done, the Board of Health does not have the ability to stand up in the middle of Bear Skin Neck and say, hey, there's too many people, go home. That's where the police have to be called in, and it is somewhat vague as far as who and when the police would be called in.
So do you think this warrants further discussion with the police chief? Well.
Well, it's not an issue. I think it's just your minutes, right?
Yeah, it's just, you're just talking about the minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, but what it's, I guess my question is, did we, so we decided that the police would come in and, and clear the beach if need be?
No, no.
It was just Biskin Neck.
I guess it's the, there are two separate issues. One is clarification of the minutes and the other has to do with the policy to enforce the, the public health regulations. So we need to clarify the minutes to reflect what Sid said for 528. The policy, I think, is quite clear. The police are the designated authority to enforce local Board of Health regulations. Is that accurate, Mitch?
It is. In addition to your agents, for matters that the board discussed, it is the police is the primary. So.
What was left somewhat vague, though, Bruce, is who initiates that action by the Board of Police? Example, you were down on Bear Skin Neck. You are a representative and a member of the Board of Health. You saw a circumstance which gave you fright. However, at that point, no action was taken. Is that?
I, Mitch, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if any, any person in a situation, resident of the town, encounters a situation where they feel the COVID social distancing regulations aren't being followed, can contact the police for enforcement. It's not a function of the members of the Board of Health. It's, anyone in town can, can do that.
That's correct. So anyone who has an issue with that should contact the police department and they would address it the same as if anybody else called. They'd, they'd follow up. They'd send an officer down to check it out and take the appropriate action.
That is the crux of it, and I think that needs to be in the minutes so that the people in the town do know what are their options. For example, there was a woman who was at the transfer station. She became concerned because not masks were wearing, being worn at the transfer station. She reported that to the Board of Health for the next meeting. Should she have called the police at that point?
So I think that that was down to the urgency that someone may feel for it. It, it's down to that individual preference. If they didn't feel the urgency at that point, you know, it was correct to forward it to the Board of Health. If they were very uncomfortable in that situation, it would have been equally correct to call the police as well.
But, but just, just a point of clarification, I think it's important that we're just discussing the minutes. So you can only adjust the minutes to what was said in the meeting. So I think it makes sense to, for someone to read to the minutes and adjust them accordingly. And it may be that a review of the policy, just to state the, I mean, I think it will, we can make sure it's clear in these minutes tonight, what people should do. But just make sure that the minutes just reflect the minutes.
Thank you, Sarah. You're right. We'll, we'll review those minutes and tonight's minutes will clearly reflect the depth and breadth of this discussion and will make sure that they're clear with respect to the police enforcement of COVID, social distancing and face covering regulations in town. Sid, thanks for bringing this up. We'll, we'll try to make sure everything is as accurate as possible when we review past minutes and minutes for this meeting as well.
Thank you.
So for these minutes, are we going to approve them or is somebody, Sid, going to take a stab at making them clearer and more representative of our discussion? We can review them offline and then maybe approve them in our next meeting.
Yes. So I would suggest that everyone review the minutes both from 528 and 62 and make the clarifications you feel are appropriate. We'll try to circulate those as soon as possible so that we can approve them at our next meeting. Thank you all.
Great. Dr. Cohen, you want to do E, F, and G since those are Board of Health?
Um, sure.
Then I'll, I'll go back to H.
Okay. Barb and, Barb and Ruth, do you want to update around testing?
I'm not sure how much more you'd want from me. We still don't have universal testing as I had before, which I would consider public health screening of, of high-risk patients. Still, that, that's still sort of off the table right now. It's still symptomatic only, except for certain groups. There was an initial meeting last Friday, Gloucester Board of Health, Gloucester Health Agent or Public Health Nurse Karen Carroll, myself, members of Bowport Ambulance and the Community Health Center in Gloucester. We were talking about how we could mutually work together to come up with a testing location and process for Cape Anne. And we agreed to sort of take a few things offline and come back together and, and talk. We've not scheduled a second meeting, but when we do, it's going to include Rockport, Essex, Manchester, and Gloucester. The third thing is a provider survey. I think I talked about this. A physician survey was sent out a couple of weeks, or actually last week, asking about testing. And safe to say that Lahey-Danvers is working well, but if we were to add another site, Gloucester was the overwhelming second choice. And so that has gone on administration. And lastly, I talked a little bit about the opportunities for different types of testing methodology that are coming out and lab leadership and medical staff leadership are weighing all those options as we speak. And it, sometimes vendors are over-promising and under-delivering, so we're really not, you know, sort of counting our chickens before they hatch, so to speak. We want to make sure we have the device in, that we've verified testing and that we have enough test kits to be able to use certain types of tests. So we're getting there. We're working on it. We work on it. Pretty much, it's about half of my time spent time testing, but we're getting there.
So Barb, can I just ask one question? Because I did, I got a question. So the testing that's going to be available for people who were at protests on Wednesday and Thursday, it looks like the closest are either Lynn or Chelsea. And so the question was asked to me that can these same people go to, like, say CVS? Do you still need a, a doctor's order? I don't even know if you know this, to go to CVS to get that, their rapid testing done?
The, the answer is, yeah, the answer is yes. This was discussed on this, I'm sorry, Barb. It was discussed on this state call earlier today that testing sites, you know, if someone shows up, being at a rally can be considered in a suspected case and is eligible for testing without any further proof or doctor's requirements. That's my understanding.
But the Minute Clinic, no, you still need a, a public health nurse or doctor to, to use those Minute Clinics?
Yeah. Yes, you do.
Okay, thanks, Barb.
Barb, is there anything we can do to help support, I know the efforts that you're diligent efforts you're making to try to get testing closer to us?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure right now. I think the survey is, will do a bit. Eighty-five, 90% of the primary care physicians within the physician hospital organization completed the survey, so the sample size was pretty good. And, and we had good participation, so I think that that will carry some weight as well.
You know, I, the data, the data.
Need moving.
Yeah, I, is DPH involved in helping promote these decisions at all? Because the data certainly are clear. Essex County and, well, Cape Anne in particular, testing is much, much lower than elsewhere in the state.
Yeah, no, they're not involved at all. It's a B I L H decision.
Okay.
Yep, unfortunately. So I'm continuing to, you know, continue to push it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of current or additional restrictions relating to COVID-19. I know that there was one issue that I wanted to bring up. At our last meeting, we did open the beaches. I don't know whether it was explicit that the regulations that govern social distancing and face coverings, I don't know whether it was explicit what that policy should be. And I'm recommending that we adopt this, the state guidelines, which would mean 12-foot distancing between parties, pretty much. That's the basic one. And consideration of restrictions for parking if we feel that extensive parking leads to overcrowding of the beaches. Sarah?
Yeah, Dr. Cohen, so I believe that, like with all, like with the other restrictions, that the town is able to go stricter, but not less strict than the state. So I believe that as soon as we took off the resident-only restriction, that our default went to the state guidelines as well. But I'm glad this is brought up because I do think we could use some more marketing on the, at the beaches of the rest, of the state guidelines.
I agree.
Mitch can correct me if I'm wrong about the.
You're correct. You're correct.
Bruce, I, I was under the impression that towns cannot be more restrictive than the state. Vis a vis when we initially, before the governor put in the mask, when we said everybody in town must wear a mask, that fell afoul of the state when the state said different. So I don't know what was discussed on the, the beach opening, because I wasn't here last week and I don't have the minutes. But I don't think the town can be more restrictive.
Yeah, it can.
So I, I, I think the technical language is the town's policies can't be in conflict with the state policy. And it's not a question of more or less restrictive. It's a legal issue around conflict with state policy. And that, and that would be judged, I'm not a lawyer, this is just my understanding, on a case-by-cases, a case-by-case basis, depending upon what the town proposal and regulation would be. Mitch, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, yes. And I would say the state has evolved a bit on their original position. They haven't changed anything in writing. But I've not seen where, if something was more restrictive, but still within reason and defensible, I, I've not seen where they forced something to, to be turned back. I, I've not seen where they forced something to, to be turned back.
Bruce, shortly after last meeting, you raised a concern that what we had decided about beaches last time is not consistent with, with the state's policy. Was there something in particular that?
You know, I just didn't realize that the default is the implementation of the state policy wrong. I just wanted to make it explicit that we are following the state regulations with respect to social distancing and face coverings at our beaches. So I'm happy to hear, you know, Sarah's correction and Mitch's confirmation that, and point of fact, we are observing the state regulations.
Bruce, on the state regulations, was there a distinction between residents and non-residents in that discussion last week?
No. The state does not address residents versus non-residents. It's a community decision whether to include non-residents in access to beaches.
Is that written in the state rules? Because I haven't seen that, the distinction between. My understanding is the beaches are open with state guidance to all residents, uh, to, excuse me, to all people who can get to the beach.
Well, those are the state beaches, Sid. The state beaches are certainly open to the entire public. Municipal beaches are governed by regulations in each community. So each community gets to decide who has access to their beaches.
And, and did we make a distinction last week as far as residents and non-residents on the beaches?
We've opened up the beaches to non-residents as well as residents, although we're not currently selling non-resident stickers to access beach parking for our municipal beaches.
And we, we've kept the resident and the parking and areas where non-residents can park as well in Rockport, have we not?
I'm, I'm, did we, we change the T-Warf parking at the last meeting?
Yes, the T-Warf.
So we did open, so we did make a slight modification for non-resident parking and an expansion of T-Warf spots.
We've, we've defaulted back to our regular parking allowances.
And so, so like off of Seaview now, behind Cape Hedge, that is, can be non-resident as well as resident?
That was never accessible to non-residents, I believe.
So what, what was decided is that there would not be the sale of the, the beach parking stickers, in essence, at this time? So that was, that was the other caveat from the last meeting, that the beaches are open to all. But we would not resume sale of the beach stickers.
Yeah, we, we put that off.
Well, how can the beaches be open to all i- if you can't get there and you can't park there?
Because then you never could. Yeah, right. There's, there's non-resident, there's non, where non-residents can park in like the neighboring neighborhoods, like, like they always have been.
Okay, all right.
Like wherever, wherever non-residents have always parked, they're allowed, they're allowed.
Like at the Endo Cell Street to get to Cape Hedge.
Yes, there's a, yeah.
So just for my confusion, we are now no more restrictive than we were last summer as far as residents and non-residents?
Exactly, yes. Yep.
Bruce, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of Sarah. So is it true now that, let's say that the beaches become a problem later in the summer, especially as, like, say, high tide? Does now the board, are we unable to restrict park, resident parking at beaches going forward? Because we went back to the state regulations at our last meeting. Are we now, we can't reverse that or can we?
That's actually a question for Mitch. I think the Board of Selectmen at any point can make, make parking changes.
Okay.
Correct. Any, anytime there's, there's an issue that could be addressed, pandemic or not.
Okay. So this board or the Board of Selectmen, if the beaches become overcrowded at any point, you could turn around and say, okay, now we're going to go to the parking lots, resident, non-resident, to half, half-staff if need be, right?
That's also in the state guidelines.
Hypothetically, yes, but knowing the amount of parking that we have. Yeah, so hypothetically, yes. I think that that state guideline is designed for state parking lots that have hundreds of parking spaces, knowing the amount of parking we have at each beach. If we have an overcrowding problem, unfortunately, it would not be from the resident parking located at each beach. Does that make sense? But yes, we, we always have the ability to, to restrict parking. That's, that's in our, in our.
I just wonder if it would make sense to, to have something in place or at least think about something. I mean, we know well ahead of time what the tides are and we know ahead of time that it's going to be nearly impossible to socially distance at Long Beach at high tide if you have the resident parking lot full. And can, can the board sort of preemptively think about that?
Unfortunately, I don't. A, I think we would get, I hate to use the word attack, but I think that there has to be some personal level of responsibility. And I don't think that we have a police force that is able to kind of like watch changing tides and, you know, tow and move cars. I, I think it just, you know, I think it has to be people being responsible.
Okay.
You know, that's my opinion. I mean, obviously, I'm just one of five, but I think there's only far, you know, so far we can take things. I'm hopeful that people, you know, if we do some more marketing of the twelve feet and, you know, people have masks and, and, and follow the rules and, you know, check the tides before you go. Maybe that could be part of our marketing, you know, check the tide before you go to the beach.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think too that, you know, going back to Bruce's presentation, if we see spikes as the summer goes on and our beaches become more crowded, that might be something we want, might want to consider.
Yeah, I'm sure if I could, if I could, following this very closely.
And, and if I could, because it kind of dovetails in with what this is about and I mentioned it at the last meeting. I think we need to look at being prepared if there, if there is a, a spike coming up, not just beaches, but an overall plan that is ready to enact, depending upon the severity of whatever that is. Right now, I don't think we, I don't think that, we don't need to do, we don't need to act on anything. But I think we need to make sure that if, as, as people are predicting in the fall, potentially because of the weather and what have you, while the fact is there may be a spike. So, you know, I don't know, again, I'll, I'll state it again. I don't know if that's a, a function of the Board of Health or jointly with the Board of Selectmen. I think it kind of falls on a kind of a joint effort at this point. But I'd, I'd love to see something like that happen.
So it, it, it depends on the issue that, which board it would fall to. But what I would say is functionally, because we've been through most of this, we just flip back a few pages in the playbook and address things as, as they would come up. You know, the town does have a pandemic plan. You know, certainly we have got used that, we have that for guidance. But we, we would, you know, have these meetings and discussion based on what we're seeing. And either both boards or one board, whichever is appropriate, would be able to take, basically reenact or enact different restrictions based on what you're seeing at that time.
So again, so the plan is to kind of do it on a one-off? And I don't mean that as a pejorative, but as, as a one-off. As they come along, if you see what areas of town might be affected or what have you, then we just go that route? Does that kind of sum it up?
I think it'd be based on what issues you have in front of you at that time.
I, I, I think that approach is good. The only thing I would add is we have a little breathing space right now. We should be thinking about what measures, if we see an increase, what, what increase is not tolerable and would lead us to decisions to, to implement or go back to past levels of regulation. So we have the opportunity now to begin thinking about those kinds of issues. Hospitalization rates, new cases, a shift, testing results. We do have some data. Will there be, you know, points in time where we begin to see the information change that pushes us in a direction to be more proactive around decisions? That, that effect may be going back to different levels of, of opening, so.
So Bruce, Bruce, this is Barb. The, the discussion is absolutely pertinent. And I think that the hospital is undertaking the same exercise right now. What we're doing is we're putting together a list of all the things we did to get to the point to get through our high-peak time so that it's muscle memory. Should we need to go backwards and undo or make more restrictions and roll those back? At the same time, we're identifying just what you said, Bruce, which is are those, what are those triggers? What are those signals that say to us, gee, we may not be in a problem right now, but boy, we better watch this closely? And what does that mean for us? So we're going through the same exercise at the, at the hospital level for the exact same reasons. Knowing that things open up and the summer gets to be here, that we'll, we'll need to put those plans in place.
I, I think Barbara and Dr. Cohen expressed it better than I did. So thank you for doing that. I, I just feel like we have the benefit of hindsight right now and we should utilize that to the maximum extent possible.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, and just to, just to dovetail on that, Mary Beth, I think to your parking, in terms of like looking back, you know, it was just last week that we opened the beaches to resident, to non-residents. So, you know, you know, for some reason, I think if we were to retrace our steps back, a step might be, you know, unfortunately going back to resident-only again at the beaches and, and those, that type of thing.
And the trick here is knowing what worked and what didn't work. And so that's the million-dollar question.
Right.
Yep. And that's where, you know, Chassie and Teresa come in handy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Great. Are there any other items for consideration for current or additional restrictions?
We have one. Yeah, I think one that we had, had discussed, looking at after the meters. Last week, the Board of Selectmen discussed that the meters started on Monday. And I believe the police have put meters back in at the end of Bear Skin Neck. And so I think it's time to open those spaces back up again.
Agreed. I agree.
Just a question for the boards to consider. With the space at the end of the neck, do you want to leave two for general business pickup as you have? Or do you want to open all of them?
I, I think since restaurants are still doing curbside pickup, I think we need to have those two.
Okay.
I'm happy to leave those two. Are they actually just being used for, for less than five-minute or five-minute pickup? I just, can, can we just make sure of that?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
The only, the only difference I see now with those spaces, and this is not to pick on my place. I love Kathy and Barb, but those spaces, they now have outside dining available. So as do most restaurants, I think, with the exception of some that don't. So I don't, I, I'm not opposed to, you know, keeping them the way they are. That's fine. But is it, does it unfairly benefit one restaurant over another, I guess?
Well, those spaces are not just for my place.
I understand.
Yes.
But they're most convenient to them. I get it. Go ahead.
Sure. So they're, they're, we, we altered the signage a few weeks ago to indicate general business. Okay. On, on all of them across towns to make sure that that was clear.
Great.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll get to it a little bit later when we get to the outdoor dining. But there are still a couple of other pickup spots left.
Good. Good.
Yes. Oh, Bruce. Sorry.
Oh, so would you like to vote?
I'm sorry. Who wishes to speak? I saw Leslie's hand up.
So Leslie, I think they need to just take an action on this before you go to yours.
Okay.
So I think this is a Board of Selectmen action.
All right, I'll, I'll take over momentarily, Bruce, then I'm going to pass it on to you.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion regarding the parking at the top of Bear Skin Neck?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen open up the parking at the end of the neck to metered parking, except leaving the two pickup, business pickup spots.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I think this is a good move. Selectmen Donley, roll call vote.
Aye.
Selectmen, Selectmen George.
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell.
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson.
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye and the motion passes 5-0. Back to you, Bruce.
Great. Leslie, I saw your hand up. Was that for something related?
Yeah. A few months ago, we put a ban on ice cream trucks.
Yes.
And we now have an ice cream truck who is an annual permit here in Rockport looking to renew. So I'm wondering if the board wants to consider allowing an ice cream truck.
Sid?
Yeah, I think it was a little bit vague why we did, did away with ice cream trucks in the first place. And I don't know that they are necessarily more of a vector in spreading a virus. If an ice cream truck stops, they can have signs just like the grocery stores do that say, you know, keep six feet apart, just as the Dairy Queen does and the Subway does as you're going into Long Beach. I would, I would move that we resume the use of ice cream truck sales with the applicable social distancing that we use for other walk, walk up to sales places.
Well, Sid, didn't we require restaurants to come up with a plan on how to implement social distancing and money exchange, et cetera? So wouldn't we subject ice cream truck to the same?
Excuse me, Mary Beth, before we discuss, do I hear a second to Sid's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Now, now we're open, open for discussion.
So I guess that's a quite, my question is really for John.
So John, is there a special planning process for ice cream trucks that you're aware of?
Not that I am aware of. And I've been monitoring my colleagues on this. This subject was discussed a couple of months ago and all permits for ice cream trucks were put in abeyance for the time. Now, should you rescind your prohibition? I agree that a written plan should be one of the first requirements since it has been instituted for all other food establishments and vendors in town. So to be equitable, you would want, you would want that. There is a process that any ice cream vendor must follow. And that would certainly be, be followed. Any ice cream vendor should know what it is according to state law. It, it would appear that the, the onus on maintaining proper coronavirus considerations in terms of social distancing and, and cleaning of, of frequently touched surfaces, et cetera, is on the, is the responsibility on the, of the owner. So that would certainly need to be in the plan. Now, the owner of a, an establishment that has takeout food can mark their building, can mark the, the, the ground, et cetera, in order to give guidance to customers. The, it certainly will be a challenge for an ice cream truck vendor. So these are all considerations that would be looked at by me on any written plan that would be submitted. So we want to make sure that people understand that the submission of a written plan is, is no guarantee to being granted a, a permit as it has not been a guarantee for anyone else who has submitted a plan. who has submitted a plan. But it is one of the first steps that would have to be considered.
Ron?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to this, but are there limitations or guidelines as to where the ice cream trucks can set themselves up to sell ice cream? Because there certainly will be locations which would be too congested for social distancing. I mean, you could envision a truck pulling onto Bear Skin Neck, and there'd be no place or very few places where they could safely set up. I don't know whether that would be part of an individual plan from each individual ice cream truck, or whether there's sort of a general guideline.
The permit to vend would come from the Board of Health. However, the issuance of a permit in any municipality is up to the police chief as one of the sign-offs to make sure that public safety was maintained to address just the very situation that you are bringing up. They also must maintain a state parkers' and peddlers' license. There are a number of steps that any applicant must go through, and making sure that they can, that they are restricted to areas where public safety will not be adversely impacted is one of those considerations.
Barb, did you have anything? Questions or comments?
No, I think, I think John's right on. I think that, you know, we do have to be careful where we locate them. I think that, again, you know, there's ice cream places that you can walk up to at any given point in time, so I think as long as we sort of make sure that folks have a plan and that most people understand the rules now, that we should be okay. I have no problem with it.
So Sid, if we can sort of modify your motion to reflect the fact that an ice cream vendor is welcome to apply, subject to the review, the development of a plan, and the review of the plan by our food inspector?
Yeah, I, I move that we rescind the blanket ban on ice cream trucks and allow them apply to the food inspector for a license upon the application and plan being accepted by the food inspector, then they can begin sales.
Any more discussion from the Board of Health? So let's vote. Sid?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
And Bruce votes yes as well. Thank you. Thanks for reminding us, Leslie. I think that's it for consideration of current or additional COVID-related restrictions. The next item on the agenda, item G, is long-term care in congregate living facility update. Chassie, do you want to begin?
Or I can just talk about, Milbert Park is doing well. I checked with Lee Duder over there, and they're all doing fine. They have no cases, no patients, who are, no people who live there who are concerned. And also, I talked to Dawn over at Pigeon Cove Ledges and Rockport High School Apartments, and they're doing well. And Old Farm Inn, so we're doing well all around still.
Great. How about an update from Chassie and/or Ron around Denmark, please?
Let me start. I can start. Yeah, okay. If you remember, last week, we talked about Denmark and how things to appear to have settled down. But unfortunately, shortly thereafter, we received word in a report from Chassie and Teresa that there were three new cases and four probable cases of COVID-19. Also, there were several complaints from families that their loved ones were not getting the attention that they felt that they should get. I spoke to one of the medical directors, and it was suspicious that understaffing was still playing a major role, perhaps in the spread of COVID, but also in the complaints, the generation of complaints. And there was also a concern that admissions were being accepted, new admissions. So I spoke with Eileen McHale, who's the DPH person, who's kind of the point person for Rockport. And she checked in with the DPH, people who were working, had been working closely with, most closely with Denmark. And I got back a sort of a brief report that DPH is still very much involved there. There wasn't a concern about admissions, since probably most of them were just Denmark patients were coming back after being hospitalized. But as long as they were separating the COVID-positive and the COVID-negative people and following all the safeguards that were put in place before, that things, they're probably doing the best that they can. There was a suggestion that, that family members be given the DPH family complaint hotline or a phone number for, if they had concerns about how their loved ones were being cared for, that they report them directly to the DPH. So from my perspective, I think we're doing what we can do, and I guess we have to trust the DPH. If they say they're involved and they're doing what they need to do, they've had an epidemiologist, surveyors, and even some staff in place to help. Though, Chassie, I think you mentioned that they are, that Denmark is looking for private agencies to try to beef up their staffing.
Yeah.
So still a concern, but I think resources are being brought to bear, and we can just monitor and stay involved and informed.
And I'll just clarify on numbers. Since the last Board of Health meeting, there are four new cases in the facility. Three of those are people, long-term residents, they've been there for a long time and had tested negative prior to this most recent testing. And then one person is brand-new, a new admission, so acquired a COVID infection prior to getting to Denmark. So that will be, you know, we've gone for a period of time with, you know, very few new cases, but they have such a small pool of people who were still negative. But as they take new admissions, you know, their numbers will increase, but they're people who didn't necessarily get COVID from being long-term patients there. So this is happening at nursing homes all over the state. You know, they've gone for a period of time of no new cases, but now with new admissions, this is, it will impact the numbers. That's what I'm trying to say.
So Chassie? Chassie, this is Barb. Are they quarantining new admissions in rooms by themselves for a couple of weeks?
They say they are doing that. Anybody who comes in without COVID infection, yes, they are, yeah, separating people that way.
All right. Thank you.
And yeah, so you all have followed the cluster, the outbreak there. They went from having a very large COVID wing to now having a very small COVID wing. So most of the people who are on the COVID wing have now transferred back to the, to the other area because they tested positive and they went through their period of isolation. So they are just going through that process, and I know it's been challenging for them, but they've done it.
Is there any evidence of reinfection?
At that particular facility, or?
Yes.
No. No.
Or have we seen any reinfections in Rockport, I guess?
No, although the state, in one of our last webinars, and Teresa could weigh in on this, did, did bring up the idea that at some point in the future, following CDC guidance and statements, there may be a six-week cutoff, so that if somebody had a PCR-positive test six weeks ago, we would have expected to see, you know, if they were consistently tested again and again, we would expect to see positive PCRs in that six-week period. But this has not officially changed in Massachusetts. We're not doing this yet, but at some point, it may change that after six weeks, if you are re-exposed to a new COVID case, you could potentially become reinfected. So I think they're still looking, you know, for research and evidence about that, and nothing has officially changed, but it has been brought up as a possibility in the future. So, but I can say with certainty that people who tested positive at Denmark are not being necessarily tested again and again and again. I know some facilities have done that, and Denmark has not. They went by a time-based strategy with cases.
Sid?
Yeah, perhaps just to Chassie or to Ron, when Denmark has a new admission, is that admission being tested for COVID? And if Denmark is looking for additional nurses, which usually means rent-a-nurse from companies which go all over the place with multiple potential exposures, are those personnel being tested before they show up at Denmark? If not, we have a very poor sit.
Those are great questions, and I do not know the answer to the staffing question, but I do not believe that Denmark is retesting somebody. Say they admit a patient from a hospital. If the, if the hospital says the patient is, you know, is COVID-positive, they take the positive. If they say the person is not infected, they take them as a non-infected case, or non-infected person.
And Sid, I think the movement of, sort of the recruitment of staff from areas that are not very affected by COVID to areas that need help, that are infected, I think that that's something that's happened, you know, quite a bit around the country. So I'm not sure what the protocol is, but there's a lot of precedent for that kind of activity.
Well, some of the precedent, Ron, is people throwing up in their homes and saying, hey, we need people in here now to fight the fire. The fire has tamped down. With all the testing we are wanting, again, a good deal of it should be directed at those people who are asymptomatic now, but will be in close contact with patients in nursing homes, which, again, could cause you to have a flare-up tomorrow, next week, next month.
No, you're right.
Point well taken, Sid.
So Chassie, this is Barb again. If Denmark is not doing this, if they accept a patient from the hospital, they should say, we want them to be tested and be negative before we accept them. That is what we're routinely doing for, I think, pretty much all of the nursing homes that we send patients to, is we test them before discharge and, and see that they're negative. That's not to say that they won't convert, but they go from being negative in the hospital to 14-day quarantine at the nursing home. But just make sure Denmark is...
Does the Board of Health require them to get that confirmation?
I, I thought so, but we should just make sure Denmark is doing that, that they get a negative patient coming into them.
Yeah, they are definitely open to COVID-positive patients, and they're going straight to the COVID wing at Denmark, so they're taking both currently.
They're taking both. Okay.
Yes.
Any other comment?
Do these positive cases reflect all of our new, I know this week, we had a jump in positive cases, so are they pretty much our Rockport jump all due to Denmark this week? No.
No. No. No. I think there was, what was there, a couple of new resident cases, and then I think four or five, like you said, Chassie, from Denmark.
Yeah.
Okay. Paul, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cohen. Let's move on to letter H, which is reopening advisory group updates. Sarah Wilkinson, you want to take this?
Sure.
Along with Barb McCarthy.
Sure, I'll take this. Barb is here. I think I saw a few other reopening group members. Of course, Mitch is here. So I'll talk about a couple of things, and then I will end our next, our next item on the agenda is consideration of outdoor dining, so I'll end with that discussion from the reopening group. But we have been busy working on lots of different things, outdoor dining being one, retail being the other. Tomorrow morning, the reopening group is hosting a meeting open to all business owners, and at that, we are going to share local and state guidelines. We're going to share some tips and successes from businesses that are already open. Some of the businesses downtown are doing some really interesting stuff to make the guidelines work, and we're going to open it up to questions and concerns from businesses that are already open, and some that may be hesitant to open or are planning to open that might have questions or concerns that we can help them with. And you can be sure that we'll bring any questions back to the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen that we need to. We are next kind of looking at outdoor displays and hoping to, we were, we're coming to the Board of Selectmen tonight in particular. Our plan, if approved, I don't think it has to be a vote, but just kind of a casual approval by the Board, is to follow the typical outdoor display process, which is an application that's on the town website. And then the reopening group is asking the Board of Selectmen if you guys are okay, me included, with, with the reopening group kind of doing a first screening of the outdoor display applications, and then turning them to the Board of Selectmen for approval. Because we're hoping to, you know, kind of allow what we can this year, because we know it's been an obviously super-challenging season. So we're hoping to allow what we can, but obviously, we need to keep especially the downtown area safe and open to allow for social distancing and to allow for all the state guidelines to, you know, for people to allow, you know, a certain number of people in their stores, but then outside their stores, you know, if there needs to be a line, that type of thing. So if everyone is okay with that, at the meeting tomorrow, we would kind of release our plan and have people start to submit applications. Can I kind of get any comments or general approval? The Board is okay with that?
I support that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, Dawn, Ruth?
Yeah, no, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, it ultimately, obviously, comes to the Board for approval. It's just that it's going to run through another set of eyes first. Is that correct?
Yep, and we're, you know, there's a chance that we can maybe kind of come up with something a little bit unique that, you know, once we see the, hold on one second. Can you move over there, buddy? Thanks. I have an assistant at times tonight. We're hoping that, you know, we might be able to come up with something unique, something outside the box, to help support people that isn't, you know, isn't kind of standard. So we're hoping that by seeing the applications, we can kind of gauge that if possible. But like you said, ultimately, all the applications come to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Yeah, good.
Just the Board of Selectmen, not Board of Health as well?
Outdoor, outdoor displays, the outdoor display applications just by, I think the bylaws have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, but obviously, since we're meeting jointly and with the public emergency, we'll obviously look to input from the Board of Health as well on all of them, I would assume.
Yes, that would, that would be the case. I think it's continually important for feedback from both groups on items as you have.
Yeah. Team, major team effort on all of this stuff, so. And then moving on, so we have tomorrow morning's meeting, which is at 9:00 PM, shortly after this call tonight, 9:00 AM, sorry. Tired.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm tired. Shortly after this call, we'll be releasing the full agenda with the Zoom information, and anyone is welcome to join, and we're hoping that it's a really productive meeting. We have, I know there are different kind of, there's a retail group that meets, and the restaurant owners kind of talk casually, and there's the Rockport Cultural District, but we're hoping to get everybody kind of in.
All the business owners.
Say that again, Mitch?
All the business owners.
All the business owners.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. And then next, looking at outdoor dining. Yeah, great. And then next, looking at outdoor dining, I think there are, which our next agenda item is, there are four restaurants, I believe, that have turned in applications. Last week, our reopening group went on our field trip, as I discussed. We've outlined, I believe, six, is it six, areas to hopefully support the restaurants that don't currently have, offer any outdoor dining spaces. So far, we have four applications that have been submitted. Anyone else who wishes to submit can basically submit any week up until Monday, and then the application will be entertained at our Tuesday meeting by both boards. I think it's important to note, because you may have all seen, the applications were emailed to both boards just prior to this meeting. So the way it works is we have, the reopening group has outlined to each restaurant their area, and then they submit a diagram kind of drawing of the tables. We, our plan then was for both of these boards to review and, you know, hopefully approve the plans. And then there's a step after that, and that is the inspectional services. So the food inspector, fire, and police then have to sign off. So several of the plans, you'll notice, seem to have more tables and chairs in their pictures than we think will actually fit. So we were going to kind of leave that up to the inspectional services so that our two boards don't have to be measuring and fitting, and we can let John Coolon, the food inspector, speak more to that. But we were just hoping to not get these two boards kind of bogged down in the weeds of measuring how many chairs will fit, but hoping that John could just share a little bit about the guidelines. And then when he visits each establishment, we can kind of work out the final plan, because they can't get approved without sign off from those three inspectional services. So I'm happy to answer any questions about kind of the process, or Barb, or Mitch, if you have anything to add.
No, I think, go ahead.
Go ahead, Barb, go ahead.
I was just saying, you know, our hope is to provide guide rails and some guidelines, but to not be so overly prescriptive that, that we sort of stunt some creative juices with folks, that each place looks a little bit different and has a little bit different sort of geography and allow them, you know, within their own sort of what, you know, what meets their needs to be able to come up with a plan. So that was our hope.
Yeah, and I will just add that we were able to work it out so that each establishment has kind of the same general amount of, the same area, the same amount of area to use. So that was really important to us, which we were able to do. So we're excited about that. And hopefully, we will have outdoor dining within the next couple days, even more than, than the restaurants that already have it. So that will be exciting.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all your hard work, the whole committee. I mean, I think the town is really going to benefit from this. And it'll be nice, it'll be something different to go downtown and sit outside, you know. I think it'll be wonderful. So thank you. Any questions from the Board?
No, thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, this is great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We're not, we're not there yet. The only additional change that I think is important to say is that one of the, in front of the Blue Lobster Grill, which is at Dock Square, part of the plan is their seating will be two, is basically two parking spaces. Basically, each restaurant is given the equivalent of two parking spaces. So their seating would be in the two parking spaces. It would be kind of roped off. But we have also closed off the area in between the Blue Lobster and Dock Square, so that will be open to walking traffic. And so traffic to the neck will be diverted up around Dock Square to the right, which we're hoping will actually make it, we will cut down on people that are just kind of driving to, to drive up the neck. So you'll still be able to get to any business on the neck that you need to. The neck will still be open to two-way traffic. It's just you'll have to go around and it will be well-marked like it is for Harvest Fest and, and other, other times that we mark it off. But we're hoping to just kind of slow down on the indirect neck traffic. So we'll see how that works, and that can be adjusted at any time as well.
Great.
John, do you have any comments?
Well, I was reviewing the Department of Public Health updates, and as of 9:00 AM today, there is an extensive checklist available for any of the restaurant owners to, to look at, to use, to reference. It's, I find it very easy to understand, and I think it should be clear. Whether it's easy to implement or not will be up to the, you know, the individual location, certainly, but the, the guidance is there. And I encourage any restaurant owners in town to, to read through this checklist prior to posing any questions, only because I think many of the questions will be answered on this, this checklist and the material that is at the mass.gov website prior to asking myself or folks on the reopening committee. That is not to say that we're not available for answering people's questions, but the answers are, are here, and it will streamline the process. If folks take a look at the guidelines and apply them to their own situation first and see what they can do in order to, to conform. If, if anyone, if any, anyone here has any specific questions, I, I can address them, but it will be in relation to the checklist. Did I hear someone ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, it was Barb. Do the four folks that have already submitted plans, do you think they know about that checklist, or would it be worthwhile to send that out to them?
I do not know.
Because it may alter their plan.
I have not been in touch with those folks as of yet.
Okay.
When, when John-
I think one of them used the checklist in their response, as I recall, so.
Yeah, and I think when John has his interactions with them, I think that's certainly something-
Okay.
-he can have.
Okay, good.
I plan to have the, I plan to have the checklist with me as I visit the sites so that folks will have that assistance of the checklist for adjusting or maintaining any compliant outdoor dining.
Great. And I can also, Barb, I, this is Sarah, I can also add a link, since the checklist, it's live, I just found it, I can add a link to it on our reopening business document that we created for the businesses.
Great, great.
So I'll do that, I'll do that tonight after our meeting. So if anyone's on the call and has trouble finding it, they can also find it through our reopening, Rockport reopening document.
That's great. Thanks.
Great. So if, Mr. Chair, whenever you move on to the consideration of outdoor dining, I think Mitch can give us a suggested motion.
Hey, well, do you have anything else for the Advisory Committee?
I don't think I do tonight.
Okay, so let's move on to the consideration for outdoor dining. Do you want to tackle that? Anything additional, Sarah, that you didn't say first?
No, Mitch, would you, would you mind, maybe you could give the motion and then just share which restaurants have applied at this point?
Sure. So this would be a joint action by both boards. So a proper motion would be move that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health acting jointly allow the Blue Lobster Grill, Feather and Wedge, the Fish Shack, and Hula Moon to move forward with outdoor dining, subject to final sign-off by the Health Inspector, Police Chief, and Fire Chief.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, Selectmen Donnelly. Any further discussion?
I would also just like to thank the, obviously, the Selectmen's office has been very helpful, but also the DPW and the Police Department. The DPW, in just a few days, was able to secure multiple new Jersey barriers to help create the outdoor areas. And the Assistant DPW Director came on our walkthrough, and they have been more than helpful in supporting this effort. So thanks to all those departments.
Terrific team effort, for sure. Good. Okay, any, any other comments from either board? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Barb McCarthy?
Yeah.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Selectman George?
Aye.
We'll come back to her. Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman George?
She stepped away, Paul. It's after eight. I think she had to step away.
Okay, so we'll just, and Selectman Murphy votes yes as well. So the motion does pass.
So, Mr. Chair, just to share functionally what will happen next, starting tomorrow, DPW in conjunction with the police will start the placement of the Jersey barriers. And I know that several of these restaurants who just received preliminary approval are on the call. So you'll be hearing from the Board of Health Office, set up an appointment for John, and you'll be hearing from the Police Chief and the Fire Chief to set up a time as well. So everything will certainly require the sign-off from those three inspectors. And once that's received, the restaurants would be clear to proceed forward.
That's great. Well, I'm certainly sorry that we're on this situation with COVID-19, but maybe this is a new beginning of outdoor dining that could happen on a regular basis in Rockport. So one step at a time, though. So thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Real quick, can I just, just one question, just a form question. The Jersey barriers, what style are they? Is it the cement barriers, or are they plastic that are filled with water or sand? Which ones?
Cement.
Cement barriers, okay.
Similar to the ones you'd see on the highway?
Yeah, okay. Same things. Okay. And, and we have those, are those being, how are those being procured?
Sure. So we had a number of them. We had a number of the 10-foot sized ones. We did have to procure on Friday a number of the 5-foot ones to make sure we could fit each of the areas. But we've done that, and they, they did arrive on Friday. So we have them on hand. And those are things that will never go to waste. They'll either get repurposed in the DPW yard, or very frequently, we need additional barriers when we have storm surge in certain areas. So they'd be redeployed for that. So they were a worthwhile investment.
That's great.
The only thing, the only thing I would add to that is the, is the one place that gives me a bit of concern, it's Hula Moon, coming down the hill, you know, by the in-unquote hill, and speed limit and things like that. I mean, I know that the chief will be on top of this, but that is just a concern I have.
You know, he, he'll be surprised.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just, just about Hula Moon. So the, if you check out that area, the nice, the, the nice thing about in front of Hula Moon and the Red Skip, both of those areas, is there are built-out landscape with tree curb cuts that lock all of them, and then the Jersey barriers will go directly across. And I will tell you that our Chief of Police, he's a tough cookie when it comes to, we joked that he was like the, you know, all, he was all about safety, and he would not approve any area, which is why he actually asked for the entire committee to do the walkthrough of downtown, the entire group. We all did it together, because he was just adamant that every place be, be totally safe. And you'll see pictures and news stories of other communities, and some places it looks cute with just, you know, rope and planters, but we, I really think going above and beyond with creating safe places. So thanks to the Police Chief for that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great to hear. So, safety first, of course. Okay, thank you. So that motion did pass. Let's go on to item J, Town Administrator Incident Command Updates, including the FY21 operating capital budgets.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this weekend certainly went very well downtown. No major issues reported by police or DPW. Everything went smoothly with operations in the bathrooms and trash pickup. The police and fire details continue on the weekends, police overtime fire details for mask duty will continue again this weekend, and we'll continue with those on a very regular basis for the foreseeable future. So that, that continues to work out well. Some heavy education happening there, and a lot of masks being distributed, but no, no major problems reported. And very briefly, on, on the budget, next week, the Board will have a 1/12 budget to consider for submission, so we can get that in. Our departments have been in the process of doing some targeted percentage reductions to meet our new number based on reduced estimates relating to Hill's tax and hotel motel's tax. We've cut those significantly to accommodate for the pandemic. So the departments have been working diligently and making reductions. We're also, notices to vendors, consultants, and contractors that, basically just putting them on notice that we'll be ending service on June 30th, so that we have maximum flexibility moving into the new fiscal year, so that there are not constraints associated with, with any of that. Our goal at this point is to make sure we have maximum flexibility. We are in good shape at this point as it relates to local reductions we needed to make. I also expect that we'll be hearing, I would hope, soon relating to state aid. That's the other wild card for us. So we certainly are preparing to make further reductions if necessary, but at this point, we are balanced. The CIPC group had a meeting last week and adjusted its free cash recommendations and its project recommendations. All of that will be in front of the Board for consideration next week. It will also go to the Finance Committee and be shared with them. The group unanimously made those adjusted recommendations. So we'll have more information and items to act upon next week.
Great. Thank you, Mitch. Any questions from the Board to Mitch regarding that?
No, thank you, Mitch, for doing such a good job and keeping us balanced.
Thank you. It's certainly a team effort. Much appreciated with all my colleagues.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. We have some good news, I hear, from the Board of Selectmen Updates and Board of Health. Why don't we start with Selectman Wilkinson?
Sure. Just some, some good news this evening, which is always nice. I was honored to be invited to the Rotary Meeting on Thursday evening, where our own Town Administrator, Mitch Vieira, was, was given, was honored with the Rotary Town Employee of the Year Award.
That's great.
Congratulations, Mitch. Well deserved.
Excellent. Well deserved, Mitch.
It was more than well deserved. And they also invited Mitch and I to talk about the reopening group, and it was a really nice evening via Zoom. And as funny as it was, they had close to 30 members, but it was nice to see it was a group that was, that were all very, very supportive. And I wanted to share it with this group of the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen and all of our efforts to keep all of the residents and visitors in town safe through the pandemic. And they were very appreciative. And, and I also shared my thoughts that, that no town employee this year is more deserving than Mitch. So as embarrassed as I'm sure he is, very well deserved.
Hey, Mitch, did you get a new car with that?
Thank you.
Now, congratulations, Mitch. And I know you're very humble, and, but you, a job well done.
Thank you.
Anyone else for, for the Selectmen Reports and/or Board of Health Updates?
This is Barb. Can I just add one comment to what Sarah said?
Sure, of course.
I think in, in talking about this, the reopening committee, I think the Rotary Club also, didn't they also say that they were appreciative that we were fairly tough on our restrictions and that we took the guidance very seriously and that we were not overly relaxed in our reopening strategy. So I think that was good to hear when we kind of think that we might be either getting too loose, too tough, or whatever, that we got, Sarah got good support around. So I thought that was a good comment.
Definitely. Yeah, that was definitely shared as well, which was nice to hear.
Yeah, those, those, you know, because a lot of times we hear the negative on everything. And to hear something positive, that certainly goes, goes far. So, and coming from Rotary, which obviously- So, and coming from Rotary, which obviously business is in, in town, that, that means a lot, so thank you.
At the risk of sounding self-congratulatory on both boards, I, I think that the right restrictions were put in place for the right amount of time, and it was done to, to the best of our ability. So my thanks to the Board of Health for their invaluable input, and, and my fellow board members here as well for making the right decisions as we went through this.
Yeah, this, this was a moving target, and we, no one thought we'd be in this situation, so. Thank you, Selectman Campbell, for that. Anything else, hearing, health agent or health inspector update?
Leslie?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, well, let's go to public comment.
I just want to, just one other thing, I see Sid's hand is up, and I wondered if Chassie or Teresa want to update us about contact tracing very briefly. So Sid?
Yeah, the question I have is Leslie, is Leslie still here?
Yeah.
Okay. A, a Board of Health question, Leslie. At 174 Thatcher Road, there is a house that has been in the woods there for 40 years. It was built with no septic system, and the, the house has, oh, the building, excuse me, has been cleared to brush around. Do we have any idea what's going on there?
Um, no, I don't. I was, I was wondering if maybe they had connected to sewer or something. I, I too was curious, but they haven't, there, there's no septic system plans for that parcel.
Okay, just, just, just for some old, old information, for, to connect to a sewer system, they'd have to get permission to connect to Gloucester's extension where they do that. And that piece of property was built, basically in a swamp, with the builder knowing he could never have that as a habitable house. So just to keep that in.
Yeah, the property is surrounded by wetlands, so there's really no room to put a, a septic system on there.
Yeah.
Thanks for that update, Sid. Chassie or Teresa, anything about contact tracing this week, or how are things going?
Am I unmuted? I don't even know.
You are unmuted, Teresa.
Contact tracing's going well, I mean, we do that ourselves. Chassie and I, you know, share that duty. We've not really put out much to the contact tracing group, you know, CTC, because we can handle it between the two of us right now.
Great. My only concern is, as we get more visitors in the town, your jobs are going to get more difficult, I, I think, because there might be cracking down contacts of exposures here might become more complicated, so best of luck.
Why, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing none, let's go to public comment. Mitch is going to announce who's up next. We asked that you direct the comment to the chairman, and we're happy to hear from anyone. So Mitch?
Okay, if you wish to speak during public comment, please use the hand raise function, or please raise your hand in your video so that we can see you. Please raise your hand or use the hand raise function. BNL TICS, you can unmute and name and address, please.
Yes, Chad Coonley, Ice Cream Store and Bean and Leaf Cafe, 12 Bear's Connect in Rockport. A question for the chairperson. This past weekend, I was, you know, down at my properties, and there was a lot of confusion with the mask policy being mandated downtown. We actually had a couple of guests enjoy iced coffee from Bean and Leaf, sitting on the property of the ice cream store, when I witnessed a Rockport police officer on a bike come up to them and tell them that they had to wear masks, and they were enjoying iced coffee, and he just scooted off on his bike after he told them that. And I was right behind them doing construction work, and they kind of turned around, were like, what was that all about? And I told them that policy is that they need to have masks, but they're supposed to use common sense. So they, they put, you know, they, they put their mask on, then they were sitting there, like worried about taking them off to drink. So I guess, I didn't hear that policy get reviewed on this meeting. I thought that every week, the, you know, addition or retraction of COVID policies was on the review weekly. So I guess my question would be, is that just a standing order, or is it not getting reviewed weekly? Because it is causing some confusion down there in Bear's.
Well, we're certainly looking at all the restrictions each week, and we've, we started taking them away, and, and as, as things have loosened up a little bit, but I don't believe there was any appetite to get rid of the mask downtown area at this point. But that doesn't mean that sometime down the river, down the road, that that could happen.
Okay, because, I mean, we were in Newburyport and other places. I mean, I know Bear's Connect obviously gets busy, but the Commonwealth has, you know, hundreds of places in towns that get busy, and we're kind of the only one with this awkward policy that kind of goes, doesn't align with the governor's order.
Point of information, we are not the only one. I know that impeding masks are required in certain places, so I'm sure there are plenty of towns that have mask requirements, but there's others.
Okay. Dr. Wedmore?
I, I, I think it's worth reminding folks that there is no cure for the COVID. It's still out there, it's still circulating, and the only defense that you have right now is to wear masks when you can't stay at least six feet, six feet away from people. So I don't see that, that changing in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Newman?
Didn't we create an exception for eating and drinking? I thought we explicitly said that.
I think that, that's where common sense would have to.
Yeah, we didn't do that formally, but if, if people can't, and if people would prefer that we make it explicit that masks are required, except when eating or drinking, if they feel uncomfortable in using their common sense, we could certainly consider that at a future meeting.
I think it's fine, I think it's gone fine the way it is. I think common sense is fine, I, I feel like.
Agreed. Okay, next. Thank you, Chad.
Public comment, please raise your hand, or please use the hand raise function. Okay, no one else, Mr. Chair?
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, thank you for everyone's hard work, and we did this in almost two and a half hours, so that wasn't, that was a lengthy agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Just before you do?
Yes.
One more thing, for the next two meetings of the Board of Health, Ron Newman was to have done the previous one and tonight, so Bruce has been kind enough to step up. So Ron, you're on deck for the next two meetings.
Good. And our next meeting will be next Tuesday, correct?
Yep.
Nothing on Thursday?
Correct.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second, roll call vote. Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Barbara McCarthy?
Yeah.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next Tuesday.